Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 20th council meeting. Call to order. We will begin this evening with an invocation and pledge of allegiance by myself. Please rise and face the flag. I believe far too often, we hear a lot of issues going on in our city, and a lot of those issues in a negative light have to do with our youth. And as such, I feel it's time that we hear from a few more of those youth, and specifically a shining example of one in particular. So I'd like to introduce to the council and all of you tonight, a young man by the name of Keyshawn Eberhart, who's a sixth grader at Orchard Knob Middle. I know he spends a lot of time in Avondale, and his presence is very well felt there by both the people that run that facility and the other people that attend it. And I'm just wondering, hey, Keyshawn, if you wouldn't mind, would you come up and do us the honor of opening this meeting with prayer?
Everybody bow his and close their eyes. God, thank you for this day. And I wish all the good violence stopped. I pray for my mom and my two brothers, Reshaun Eberhart and Deshaun Eberhart. I pray for my mentor, Mr. Ryan. And my church is New City Fellowship. And I pray for God. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. All right, with that, we'll move on. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye. Opposed is nay. So ordered. Thank you very much. We have no special presentations this evening, which moves us on to ordinances on final reading. Madam Clerk, 5A, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance. So as a rezoned property located at 7331 Shallowfoot Row, more particularly described here in from R4 Special Zone to C2 Convenience Commercial Zone.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I move to approve.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed is nay. So ordered. Thank you very much. B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance. So as a rezoned property located at 917 East 16th Street and 1604 Central Avenue, more particularly described here in from M1 Manufacturing Zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone.
Councilman Byrd. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed is nay. So ordered. C, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance. Article III, zoning boundaries to add a new Division VI Level Field Gateway Overlay Zone, Districts 5 and 6.
Councilman Gilbert. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed is nay. So ordered. Thank you. D, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance. Article III, zoning boundaries, Division IV, Brainer Overlay Zone, Districts 5 and 6.
Councilwoman Byrd, followed by Councilman Gilbert. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed is nay. So ordered. Thank you very much. Move on to ordinances first reading. Madam Clerk, 5A, please.
Reading 6A. An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of the 5100 block of Genesis Lane to allow for creation of green space and parking as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
That's in your district, sir. So with your approval, I move approval.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Charles H. Coolidge Medal of Honor Heritage Center, Inc. in substantially the form attached for a term one year at the rate of $1 per year, with the option to renew for one additional year for approximately 600 square feet of a building at 1170 South Watkins Street and portion of tax map number 156CC012 for the storage display cases obtained from the Chattanooga History Center. A resolution authorizing the Director of Human Resources to enter into the First Amendment to the contract buying between the city and the Chattanooga Metropolitan Airport Authority and substantially the form attached to manage the authority's pension and certain employee benefits, and as more particularly specified in the First Amendment. A resolution authorizing the Director of Human Resources to enter into group insurance agreements in substantially the forms attached with one, the Chattanooga Hamilton County Air Pollution Control Board, two, the Enterprise Center, Inc., three, the Carter Street Corporation, DBA, Chattanooga Hamilton County Convention and Trade Center, and four, the Chattanooga Board of Directors of the Fire and Police Pension Fund to offer coverage for certain employee benefits as specified in their agreements. A resolution to rename the 1100 block of Cleveland Avenue to the 1100 block of Lincoln Parkway as referenced in case number 2018PW01. A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute an agreement with Hamilton County for the 2018 biannual GIS imagery ortho-photography update for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Move to approve.
A resolution authorizing year two of three for on-call modeling and floodplain analysis services from one, LDA Engineering, two, CDM Smith, three, Stan Tech, four, ACOM, five, AMAC Foster Wheeler, six, BWSC, seven, Folio Macandah, and eight, HDR, to enter into eight one-year blanket contracts with these professionals firm subject to one remaining annual renewal option for professional services estimated at $650,000 total annually for all eight professional firms for use by all departments.
Move to approve.
Second.
A resolution authorizing year two of a four-year term for the on-call blanket contracts for geo-environmental consulting and construction materials testing services, contract number E16007301, with the following firms: One Geo Services LLC, Two KS Ware and Associates LLC, Three S&amp;M E, Inc., Four Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., Five Terricon Consultants, Inc., and Six Thompson Engineering, Inc. Based on the three services categories of geotechnical, construction, materials, testing, and environmental services that each consultant qualified for, renew of the six one-year blanket contracts for professional services estimated at $400,000 total annually for all six professional firms for use by all departments.
Move to approve.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T18001801, with MBSC Black Creek LLC for Upper River Gorge Black Creek Phase 8, and to accept the cost and fees associated with the procurement and services of a licensed geotechnical engineer to inspect and approve designs for a new city street. A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T18001807, with TG Edwards, Inc., for the Home Serve Office Project, and to accept a contribution in the amount of $30,806 towards the cost of sidewalk and curb and gutter implementation.
Move to approve.
Good evening. For your consideration tonight, first, on behalf of Public Works, we have a new blanket contract for boiler and heat exchanger services to be awarded...
We don't have these.
I'm sorry.
We don't have them.
Oh, that's fine. Of course, the first eight purchases that we have for your consideration tonight are on behalf of Public Works, first being a new blanket contract for boiler and heat exchanger services to be awarded to Industrial Boiler and Mechanical Company in an estimated annual amount of $80,000. Second, the purchase of one backup pump to be awarded to Xylem, Inc. in the amount of $285,001.60. Next, new blanket contract for washed and crushed stone to be awarded to Vulcan Materials Company in an estimated annual amount of $431,000. Next, a new blanket contract for asphaltic concrete to be awarded to Southeastern Materials Company, Inc. an estimated annual amount of $490,000. Next, a new blanket contract for front-end loader service to be awarded to Waste Services of Tennessee LLC in an estimated annual amount of $85,000. Next, a new blanket contract for elevator, escalator, and lift maintenance, Citywide, to be awarded to United Elevator Services LLC in an estimated annual amount of $100,000. Next, a blanket contract renewal for Peterbilt OEM parts and service to be awarded to the Peterbilt Store in an estimated annual amount of $35,000. Next, a blanket contract renewal for paint and paint supplies to be awarded first to Sherwin-Williams Company, and second to PPG Architectural Coatings, Inc. in a total estimated annual amount of $80,000. And finally, on behalf of the purchasing division, we have the blanket contract renewal for multipurpose printing paper, Citywide, to be awarded to American Paper and Twine Company in the estimated annual amount of $55,000. Thank you.
Yes, yesterday, I think the city of Chattanooga and also Hamilton County was Hospital of Park Ridge Medical Center and also Memorial. They put a new amp plus amp out. What that does is that if someone's having a heart attack, you can actually, if you have that amp on your phone, you can push it, and 911 will pick it up, and then they're going to hit quicker services by having that amp. So it kind of helps all our citizens for us getting quicker services because normally when you have a heart attack, every second does count. So I thought I'd bring it up. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Earlier today, I think you were briefed on a matter involving a contract issue for one of our fire halls. And what I'm proposing to you this evening is a settlement proposal for River Street Architecture versus the city of Chattanooga in the amount of $28,708.17. I need your approval for that.
Second.
Looking at fire. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to repeat what happened in Planning and Zoning Committee that I will be putting forth and have instructed the city attorney to put forth a resolution on our April 3rd agenda for steep slopes and floodplain development procedures, so we can further look at this particular issue in our city and make our best decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let you all know that yesterday Volkswagen released that they're going to be doing a five-seat SUV here in Chattanooga and production will begin in January to make that vehicle. The great thing about this is that it's going to bring more job opportunities to Chattanooga. And the second thing is that Aerotech, the team agency that they use to employ to workers for Volkswagen, they hire convicted felons. So if you're a convicted felon, and you have, and it's been at least seven years, and you can go through the process. So right now, you can submit your application, go through the process, take the assessment test, and then once they, they'll call you in for an interview. If you pass all of those steps, then you can become employed with Aerotech and then transition over to Volkswagen. So please spread the word about that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seeing no further lights, we will move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Byrd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public Works and Transportation did meet today. We went over all the items for today's and next week's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Byrd.
No reports, sir.
Councilwoman Coonan. Councilman Gilbert. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Planning and Zoning Committee did meet today where we covered items on ordinances, final reading, first reading, and also the Form-Based Code one-year review changes. Thank you.
Yes, today, we had Economic and Community Development Committee meeting where we had a discussion on the food, on a food trap ordinance that we're looking at developing. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, stakes us to the point in our agenda, recognition of persons willing to address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council this evening? I see a few hands. Mr. Attorney, would you read the rules, please?
Yes, anyone interested in addressing the council will only be recognized at the microphone. You have five minutes, unless the council provides for additional time. Can't use any vulgar or obscene language. You cannot personally attack or personally denigrate others. You only have, you can only address the council on matters that are within its jurisdiction. And, Mr. Chair, there's no one that's on the list in terms of speaking more than twice.
You just give us your name and...
My name is Jessica Christie, and I would like to speak on the matter of the panhandling ordinance...
Excuse me a minute. Make sure that button is pushed right there on the, on the mic. There's a little... Yeah? There we go, sorry.
There we go. Okay. Sorry. My name is Jessica Christie, and I would like to speak on behalf of the ordinances, the panhandling ordinance that's being considered. You know, it's, I understand that this is in order to be a countermand to the state ordinance that is in effect. However, when you consider that you have homeless people out there that oftentimes can't even afford to have food or have shelter, and you're talking about fining them $50, well, in many cases, you're still talking about eventually they're going to be going to jail because they can't pay the $50. I myself have been homeless for over two years. I actually had to panhandle last week because I had to have $20 for my medication. Now, if I can't afford $20 for my medication, how would I afford $50 to pay a fine? Or what would be the purpose of putting me in jail? What would that serve? So I just would like that to be in the consideration, you know, for, for the council members here when considering this bill. I, I understand and agree that we need something alternative to just jailing people because that is not going to solve an issue. All that's going to do is raise the jail population. It's going to keep those people who are down, going to keep them down further, for longer, and take more, for them to be able to take care of their families. But we don't, don't need something that's going to eventually do the same thing. You know, eventually, it's going, like I said, if you can't pay the $50 fine, you're still putting them in jail. You're not, you're not solving an issue here. What's to solve an issue? Is if people are getting, you know, they're having an issue with the panhandling, provide them services that they can help themselves, which I understand that is part of it, but, but without fining them for something that they can't afford to do. You know, we are people that are struggling. You know, I, like I said, I've been, I've been over two years, myself. And it started out as a domestic violence case. So why would I need to pay a fine or go to jail because I'm trying to get my medication last Friday morning? These are things that need to be considered with this bill because I think the bill is, the idea behind the bill is a very interesting idea. And I understand that you're trying to avoid the mandatory jail sentences. But the verbiage of it is still, needs a lot of work before you go and pass this bill. I implore you to, to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christopher Dahl, and I reside in the Highland Park area. And I'm here today to address an issue that I've seen going on off of Alton Park Boulevard and 33rd Street. And this is on a, a property that's owned by EPB. It's actually a substation. And what's been created over, I would say almost two years, is, I don't know if it's a retention pond, but if you go out there and look at it, it appears to be a cesspool. I've contacted EPB about it. I've contacted the city representative that's over that area. And so now I'm bringing it to public awareness that there's this cesspool that's being created. I've also witnessed wood chips being dumped into it by EPB employees, and I don't think that's adequate to fill it in. And now I think it's a problem that should be addressed by our Public Works Department since, you know, EPB hasn't addressed it. It's been over two years. Thanks, and have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Chairman Smith, ma'am, and gentlemen, my name is David Tulis. I'm the blogger with the biggest pen in Chattanooga, which is to say 92.7 Nuga Radio. A couple of weeks ago, I gave you a copy of a notice, which is my report to you. It is a report of people who matter, and that would be the General Assembly. It is a report on the statutes regarding transportation. And I would like to follow up on my, my earlier submission to you to explain some of the reasoning behind it. It is, the notice, transportation administrative notice, is given to the city to inform it of the law regarding transportation and travel. There is a distinction between travel and transportation that you and this audience and city governors need to know about and pay attention to. And it is an activity that is under the, the authority of the mayor, the executive branch. And so I'm appealing to you and would just ask you to consider what you might be able to do as members of the legislative branch to rein in an ultra-veryous activity. That means activity outside the law, activity outside the boundary, which is what policing in traffic does. These are police powers which are exercised beyond people who are in transportation. It is being exercised upon people who are not in transportation, who are not buying and selling the service of carrying goods or people for hire. And it is ultra-veryous. It is outside of authority. So I'm asking you, as the mayor considers this, and Wade Hinton considers this on behalf of the mayor, to take charge, okay? You represent the people. You are the council. You are the father and the mother of us, the residents, and people who work in Chattanooga. And you were looking out for residents, even, even if they don't know how to look out for themselves, even if people who do not know how to deal with cops in a traffic stop don't know how to defend their rights or assert them as belligerent claimants in person, which is what you should all be, belligerent claimants in person. That's what we have to be when we're wrongly assailed or stopped or arrested. Now, how do we do this? What is the, the method? It is a single sentence in the form of a question that should be inserted into the protocol of every arrest. And that would be, ma'am or sir, are you using this car as a vehicle, as a motor vehicle, for hire or for profit in commerce? Or you could phrase it differently. You say, ma'am, sir, are you using this car or truck as a common carrier for hire? Or are you involved in a commercial operation of this car or truck for profit? Question mark. And that's it. It could be something like that. And every traffic stop is an arrest. Every one, every traffic stop is an arrest under State versus Garcia and State versus Raspberry. For Fourth Amendment purposes, a traffic stop is an arrest, is a seizure, period. And the executive branch's officers do not Mirandaize people in traffic stops as they are required to do, I would say, by Miranda, the 1960s opinion, but also by the, the rules for the department, which you can read about at nugonomics.com. So what we have with notice now is that officers know when they have authority. If they ask the question, they know whether they have authority to proceed with the arrest, right? It is an arrest, and presumably, the, the victim, if you will, has to Mirandaize himself if, since the officer's not going to do it. Does he have authority to proceed? If the person says, no, I'm just taking the kids to soccer, well, clearly, there is no arrest. And the presumption is rebutted. The rebuttable presumption of jurisdiction is rebutted because the person is using the car privately to take friends or family on private business. If the person says, yes, I'm carrying frozen hearts to a Nashville hospital, let me go, I'm in a hurry, well, at that point, the officer should ask, ma'am or sir, can you show me your driver's license? Can you show me your registration and your mandatory insurance, which you have to have if you're involved in transportation under Title 55? My document may be a bore, except here, everyone, except Wade Hinton, but it does recount the nature of our laws, including Title 49, which is the US Code. We are bound in Tennessee under Title 49. So the, the question I want to bring up is, who is under the jurisdiction of Title 55? Cabbies, truckers, courier services, transportation companies, dump truck drivers, bus lines? Yeah, Uber and Lyft are under transportation. And so what, what I'm proposing is a reform that we will favor the poor. The poor people of our city, the immigrants, minorities, orphans and widows who are protected in the scriptures. They're given special protection by God in the Bible. And our police department should not be harassing people under, under pretended authority, under ultra-veryous authority who are in this sector. There needs to be a reform. Let us make Chattanooga a sanctuary city on this point, a haven. Just think about the possibilities. Thank you.
My name is Andy Sellers. I own Bettyville on MLK. We are all concerned...
Um, we are all concerned on MLK, the other business owners as well, with the panhandling. The panhandling is not just, hey, can I get five dollars, can I get twenty cents? It's a long story. They're mainly harassing our customers, and the customers don't wanna come back to the area because they know they're gonna be harassed, mainly in this general area. The homeless people that have been homeless on MLK, um, they do camp behind my store, they've been there for a long time, they watch out for my property, and they don't panhandle. So some of them do, some of them don't, but I do agree with the ordinance being put in place. Just customers, they're, they just get harassed over it. And there's other MLK business owners here with me today that do support the bill as well.
My name is Landon Howard, I live in Jerry Mitchell's district. I think the panhandling ordinance and just the way that people without houses are treated in the city is, is already, uh, it's already reactionary, already in the city. If you are, don't have a place to sleep, and since there's no shelter here in town, um, people are forced to sleep outside, and that's gonna be on somebody's property. So guess what? You're trespassing. So where are you supposed to sleep? So you're already, as a homeless person, you're already gonna be criminalized, and now y'all are saying you wanna pass this ordinance that then, uh, you, I mean, somebody was saying that this is actually supposed to be less lenient, but what they're not saying is like they're also wanting the power to pass an injunction against folks who hang out in a single particular area. Sounds like criminalizing people, uh, more. So this is all reaction, you know? It's just like, if y'all wanna, if y'all don't like panhandlers in your face, um, you know, usually it is like a desperate situation. And I don't know, if I'm desperate, I'm gonna get, you know, I'm gonna, you know, and I need something, I might be annoying, so what? Okay? Like imagine what they're going through for a minute. We don't need to be making new laws about how to, you know, whatever. I mean, folks, we need social workers and, and people to go and actual services and actual houses, affordable houses, for folks to go live in. Um, and this is the exact opposite of what we need to be doing right now. I understand there's like a, uh, some kind of mayor's, uh, task force, uh, that's coming together. I mean, this is like, like, I guess a good start, it's better than nothing. But folks are coming up here from the community for years and asking y'all to, to, you know, reinvest this money that you throw at tourist, you know, industry crap and condominiums that are going up all over the place, to take some of that money that you're throwing at them and actually invest in affordable housing and like actual living wage jobs, not this service industry stuff. I mean, I work in the service industry right now and I make ten fifty, you know? Like, how is anybody supposed to survive on that? All right? You know, y'all are creating this problem, I mean, the city collectively is creating this problem. And then you're not willing to do anything about it to actually prevent folks from being in that situation to begin with, um, significantly, other than some token program. Do y'all feel me? I mean, just, is this just... Y'all created this problem, you're just sitting around and not doing anything or actively... Because every time I look at these agendas, it's zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, and it seems all very like apolitical, okay? But what really is, you're just administering these developers to flip properties and then therefore raise the cost of living on the rest of us. So it's gotta end, and you can't be doing this crap anymore.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Joel Willis, and this means I'll leave you alone for two weeks, so how about that? Uh, so what we're really needing here, I've been following this ever since I read the first story, uh, because the homeless population is very, is a very heartfelt subject for me. And I'm deeply concerned with how we're handling, like my friend said, um, this, this crisis really that our city economy has created. Speaking as a man who has a college degree, clean background, uh, and just the most employable guy you could ever meet, uh, I wouldn't recommend to my friends who are similarly employable to move to this town. My mother, my mother, also college educated, she's going through training to become a pharmacy tech. She wants to move out of the small town that she lives in, she would love to move here, but she can't because of the, uh, housing prices. The only way that I can afford to live on my far above minimum wage salary is to live in the cheapest parts of town. That's, that's exactly the problem right there. And so instead of, instead of inserting people into social services, we're gonna have them interact with the police, we're gonna put pressure on individual officers to make that discretionary call, okay? That turns into a volatile situation over nothing, over nothing. I'm very sorry that people who are lucky enough to have the capital to own a business, uh, feel inconvenienced by these people. I feel that if you are not concerned about the people who are not aggressive, you don't understand the current ordinance that is on file. Because it also criminalizes non-aggressive panhandling. Aggressive behavior by people, by any person, whether or not they're asking for money, is already criminalized. So... And to, to talk about expanding the ordinance as it is to the entire city is to expand, uh, criminalization of the people that fall under the definition of passive panhandling. Um, and, and we know it doesn't work. We know that this approach to criminalizing people just doesn't work. And we're smarter than this, and we're better than this. We have some of the brightest tech minds moving here because of our infrastructure, because of our, our free coding classes, goodness gracious. This, this city has so many resources to put people through a code bootcamp, to, to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on automatic weapon ammunition, and we can't fix the housing crisis? We can't give some grants to some nonprofits to do this work? I, I just don't see how it makes sense. And it would be really great, I just, why, why was this not mentioned in committee reports? When we had a meeting about it and planning, we had to go and take notes. People had to take time off work. We're not getting any communication on this. I've seen differing reports and different media outlets. Why are we not getting accurate information on this? It, it creates a very adversarial atmosphere. And so you have people coming here that, that think that, you know, you guys are just downright evil. Gotta do better on this, this is a, this is a big situation. Uh, and just really just transparency and maybe just some foresight over what's gonna happen to these people that are fined and jailed in a few years. They're gonna be right back there. It's a renewable source of income, I guess, for the city. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Emma Wagner, and I live in District Seven. How many beds are available in the limited homeless shelters in Chattanooga? And how many millions are being allocated to social services? And I ask you this because for the cost of fifty dollars, a potential contempt of court charge after you can't pay the fifty dollars, plus additional court costs and processing fees, of course. And then to stay in jail not to exceed thirty days, Chattanooga's most needy can finally access social care, or so we're hearing. Uh, in September twenty seventeen, a Silverdale expansion contract, which calls for an additional one hundred and twenty-eight beds and is expected to cost between twenty million and thirty million dollars, was approved by the county commission. Instead, I'm of the opinion that Chattanooga has more beds to fill at an already overfilled for-profit facility, as well as rifling through the bare pockets of the most underprivileged of our fair city. Chattanooga is better than this, and I believe that the council could come up with better solutions for the supposed nuisance of panhandling than this proposed ordinance. Recidivism is at an all-time high. The last thing we want is for the most underprivileged people in Chattanooga to end up inside of Silverdale. If the council members need, if the council members need ideas, then they should look no further than the people who live in their districts. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council and members here. I'm a businessman on MLK, my name is William Green, I own Gee's Detroit Sausages. It's not the point that we trying to stop you from asking people for money. The whole point is, I give homeless people food all the time. I don't mind helping people whose, whose bad on their luck. I'm not rich, I'm just a businessman trying to survive. When people come out of the restaurant, and people come up to them, ask them for money, I rather you come to me as a business owner than the customer. Because the customer comes to support my business. And when people come and ask them for money, that deters them from coming. Now, there's a lot of solutions that probably can happen. There's the backside of Douglas Hikes, all the trash. Maybe we can come up with some type of solution to where you can put you to work to clean up the area where you stand. Might be one way that we can help you out. But you also have to be able to help yourself before you ask for a handout. Now, every business owner down there is trying to make a living. And versus coming asking, instead of asking what can you do to earn some money, then you may get a better response. So it's not about nobody trying to put you out, mistreat you, because I feed anybody that come to my restaurant. There's no person homeless down there ever came and I turned them away. Even if I don't have anything for them to do. But you have to understand, people are down there trying to make a living. If we can come to some type of agreement, maybe the city will start some type of program for you all to be able to clean up the area where you are staying. And I think that's a start, and maybe that's where we need to start. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Chamberlain, I'm from Burlington, Vermont. We had the same problem that you have. Our business owners were harassed by homeless people, and, uh, we have tourism that, that we did not, we did not want our people to be harassed by, um, homeless panhandlers. So we did do the fifty dollar fine in our city of Burlington, Vermont, and it failed. And, uh, we no longer do it. And I would ask that you councilmen call my mayor of Burlington, Vermont, and find out what did work for us and why the fifty dollar fine was abandoned. Thank you.
Good evening, council, my name is Sean Roberts. Listen to my mother-in-law. And use this, and I'll be quick, I don't have an answer how to fix this. You two are gonna find the answer, the community and you. But I'll ask this. Don't enact further war of class by fining someone that has nothing, and use your heart and compassion and your mind. Use your heart. Put yourself in some shoes, I fed them. I would sit at racetrack on my food cart when I owned it. And I'll talk with so many that camp under the bridge. There's a thousand stories and they're all different. Use your heart. Use love. No matter what you believe in, love's what's gonna help this world, and use it. And don't furtherly fine these people.
Good evening, my name's Ginger Moss, and I live in Jerry Mitchell's district. And I'm here to speak on the anti-panhandling ordinance again. I had the, uh, opportunity to sit in on the committee meeting today so that I could get some clarification as to what the intent behind this is. And it was very clear that it was really to be leveled against aggressive panhandling, and not against homeless people or poor people or less-than-aggressive panhandling. But as Joel pointed out earlier, our existing city ordinance that covers the tourist, tourist area downtown does not specify the difference. What are we going to do? Who is giving the police the power to make that determination? Is it just because a business owner is inconvenienced, that their customers don't like it? I've been a businesswoman of a brick-and-mortar store in this town, and I had affluent customers. That attracted panhandlers, and sometimes they got aggressive. I completely understood it. You just go out and you tell them, don't do that, don't behave that way. To do anything else is to turn it into a class war. We're taking our most vulnerable citizens. As the medical professional spoke last week, many of these people have been alienated through trauma in their youth. They may have disabilities, seen or unseen. We're passing judgment on these people based on the way they behave. If they're assaulting someone, arrest them for assault, but not because they panhandled and assaulted. Do you see the difference? There's already laws in place that cover the way these people behave. We don't need any new ones. And yes, I'm from Atlanta, where we've had gentrification way before we did here. We had aggressive panhandlers at one point, I'm like, do I need a gun? Because these people are getting really aggressive. No, they, I made friends with them instead. Okay? I understand that it is inconvenient and uncomfortable when somebody comes up and very aggressively is asking you for money. Don't engage with them. And if you do engage with them, tell them to back off. That is really, for the most part, all it takes. There's going to be some exceptions, there's probably twenty to thirty here in town that are truly aggressive. But again, deal with the behavior if they're assaulting someone, verbally abusing someone. Don't tie it into the panhandling, don't tie it into a class war. We don't need to be filling jails. We don't need to be overcrowding all of the mental health resources we may already have. And we need to instead, rather than using a punitive system to try and help people, we actually need to create programs that actually do help people. We need to be connecting these people back into our community. The root of addiction is a lack of connection. Forcing them into mental health, putting them in shelters they don't wanna be in, not dealing with their addiction, isn't gonna help our city. We need to be creating programs to reconnect them and bring them into the community. Deal with the root of the problem. This should not be about panhandling. There is nothing wrong with anyone asking for money, and there's nothing wrong with me giving it to them if I choose. You're saying, you're getting a little, little too aggressive there, bud, back off. And that's how you handle it. Every now and then you may need a police officer, but it's gonna be because they're assaulting someone, not because they're panhandling or inconveniencing someone. Thank you.
One moment, one moment. We have no further comments from the audience, so let me give Councilwoman Coonrod an opportunity to say something real quick.
Thank you. Whoa, slow it down a little bit, I was gonna... But first I wanted to say, thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns, the business owners and the community as well, I appreciate that. Far too long that we're often told to keep the book up under our nose closed. So when you voice your concerns and share that, then we get to hear what you have to say. Whether if we agree with you or not, we still wanna hear what you have to say. But a lot of time, a lot have been said. The thing that stuck with me the most is several people have said they panhandled because of the lack of being able to get their, uh... of the lack of being able to get their medicine, right? And we've also heard people say that we want to know what resources are available to help us, so I'm going to give you a resource that's going to help you to get your medication. So write this down, it's important. So Memorial North Shore Health Center, located at thirty-nine oh five Hickson Pike, Suite one oh three. They help provide medication, and they also, you know, get you connected to see a doctor, to see, you know, get your physicals, your checkup, those kind of things. If you need to have some kind of surgery done, they send you to, you know, the next level to have that done. Again, that information is Memorial North Shore Health Center, thirty-nine oh five Hickson Pike, Suite one oh three. So if you're out here panhandling just to get medication, please go to this location tomorrow so you can get your medication. That's a resource for you. Please spread the word to other people that may be panhandling for the exact same reason. I'm only here to provide you with that resource. I'm not saying that...